Okay, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting of November 28, 2022. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Albrecht.
Present.
Gould.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Trent.
Here.
Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for, well, one person for coming tonight. And even though it's 7:00 with daylight savings time, it feels like midnight.
Yes.
To some extent. So first, as a tradition with the city, I will change chairs with the city attorney, and we will have the selection of the mayor and mayor pro tem for the upcoming year. Mr. City Attorney.
Nominations are now in order for the office of mayor for the city of Rochester for a term expiring November of 2023. Mr. Sage.
Thank you, City Attorney. I would like to nominate Stuart Bixson for mayor.
The name of Stuart Bixson has been placed nomination for the office of mayor. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, nominations are closed. The name of Stuart Bixson has been placed nomination for mayor. And Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Having seven votes, the motion passes, and Stuart Bixson is the mayor for a term ending November 2023. Now, we'll do the same process for the mayor pro tem. Nominations are now in order for the office of mayor pro tem for a term ending November 2023. Mayor Bixson.
Because I'd like to nominate Nancy Salvia.
The name of Nancy Salvia has been placed in nomination for the office of mayor pro tem for a term ending November 2023. Are there any other nominations? Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, I would like to nominate myself.
The name of Ann Peterson has been placed nomination for mayor pro tem for a term ending 2023. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, the nominations are closed. At this time, we will have a vote in the order nominated. And for those, actually, Madam Clerk, if you may take role, starting with the office of mayor pro tem for Nancy Salvia.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
No.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
That nomination having received six votes, that nomination passes, and Nancy Salvia is the mayor pro tem for the city of Rochester, and I will relinquish my seat at this time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jeff, you were mayor for four minutes.
Yeah, there's always that temptation to slam the gavel down during the meeting. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
I'd just like to thank everybody for their support. It's a great honor to be the mayor of Rochester, and I will do my best to help lead the city.
Sure, I'd love to say something, so kind of echoing those comments. Thank you, council. Thank you for your support. I enjoy serving as mayor pro tem of the city, and I look forward to the upcoming year ahead as we have some exciting things. Looking to bring on a new city manager. We, while we are super appreciative of city manager Banda, we've got to let this guy retire. So, look forward to the year ahead.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you, mayor. So, I would ask of one thing of the two of you then this year, to be inclusive of all council people, and to bring back the employee appreciation awards that we used to do. I think it's lacking, and I think it would be something that we need to do to honor the employees that we have here for their amount of time that they spend and how we used to do that. So, I would ask of those two things.
Thank you. All right, next on to public comments, scheduled, non-scheduled presentations. Come on up to the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Scott Marley. I live at 753 Ludlow Avenue. I was at the planning commission meeting earlier this month. I was there to register my objection to the idea of rezoning the SolarOnyx property at the corner of Woodward and Ludlow. I'm actually here to ask a question because I came away from that meeting with kind of some fogginess on this one question, which is, I understand that the Russians have been trying to sell that property for a while, and that they've been unable to do so. And I hope that if rezoning is considered, it's considered only from the standpoint of what is in the interest of the city. But I also came away with the impression that some negative repercussions would happen as a result of the property not being sold, not being rezoned. So, my question is, what is the worst that would happen if that property were not sold? I don't know if anybody can answer that for me.
Well, I mean, right now, it's zoned industrial, so you could have an industrial facility there.
And if it just stays industrial but does not get rezoned, or does not get sold, I'm sorry, just indefinitely, if the current situation carries on indefinitely, I mean, the property will still have to be maintained. I assume that at some point, the Russians would have to make a decision to sell it or just abandon it. I'm not sure what their financial situation is with that building, but...
Well, they could sell it to another party that wanted to use it for industrial purposes.
Right. And if nobody ever wanted to do that, it would just remain indefinitely as it is. Basically, there's nothing negative that would happen as a result of that, other than the fact that there's an empty property there for that period of time.
I think that's correct. I mean, we're hoping to, I think the Russians want to sell it and have a use for it, but yes, in that scenario.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. Maybe that was an obvious question, but it just wasn't clear.
Councilmember Trent, you had a comment?
Well, if I can remember correctly, or maybe I am correct, that it was also RM1 was part of that?
Well, RM1 was the goal to change it there in the master plan, but this council would have to vote to do that.
Okay.
So, right now, it's industrial.
But the master, Mr. Mayor, the master plan is very important, and so when it says it can be zoned RM1, that gives it...
Mr. Mayor, it was actually RT is what it says in the master plan.
Okay, RT.
Two and a half stories, three five feet.
Two and a half stories. So, that is much easier to get approved because that gives them like extra credit. I don't know, three aces instead of, you know, three twos. And I think it's an excellent question because that makes you think, wow, what are these, what are the private property owners going to do? So, I think that, thank you for coming and asking that.
And as we said at the planning commission, the planning commission can simultaneously approve the site plan and the zoning change, but the zoning change has to come to this council where the site plan does not.
So, the zoning is a two-step process. First, it has to be approved by the planning commission, then by city council.
Correct. Right, but the zoning, and the zoning can do both simultaneously. We won't have a say on the plan, the site plan, we would have to approve the, so in theory, even if the planning commission approves it, everything's great, it still has to come here.
Right. Gotcha.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the planning commission could vote no on the zoning, and the petitioner could still ask to come to full city council. So, they're a recommending body on zoning. You're the final answer on that. So, the final answer for the zoning sits right here.
Gotcha.
Right, and then a question for the city manager for the next planning commission meeting. Is it on?
It is not. So, we've met with the developer right after the meeting, and they're looking at downsizing or other options, but they will not be ready for December. They're hoping for January. And then we'll let everybody know in advance when that meeting would be, be the first Monday in January.
And did I hear that you're retiring at the end of this year, or?
A year, any year, next year.
So, you'll still be here in January?
I will.
Gotcha. Mayor.
Councilmember Albrecht.
At the last meeting, I know this is not a special project because I'd asked the question at the last meeting, but you did say, Nick, even though we won't, we only have a vote on zoning, we would get information on the site plan and everything else, just so we would be well aware of what's going on.
Right, in most cases, unless they, if they came in and said, we'll take RT, two and a half stories, 35 feet, and then do a site plan that met all ordinance requirements, you would never see that technically. If they come in for a conditional rezoning, which we think they will, which would mean they need to do something different than what RT or RM1 or, excuse me, RM2 would allow, then you would see that as the conditions would be the site plan that would go with it.
I think, Councilmember Albrecht, technically, we don't have to see the site plan, but I think it would be a good idea for us to see that.
That was my request last meeting, mayor, because of the passion of the people in that area, we'd want to, we want to look at it as carefully as we did the special project on Second Avenue or First Avenue.
First.
Councilmember Gould.
Yeah, as far as your question on if they don't sell it and it's not rezoned, would it just sit? I guess I have a question about that because at the planning commission meeting, they were talking about having to do some degree of cleanup. Is that, doesn't that, wouldn't that need to be done regardless of the sale, the cleanup piece?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, through the chair, to Councilman Gould, the, so it's capped, so the answer's no, as long as it's not, if they touch the ground, yes, but they're not going to, they're just leave it capped. So, we're, we're in a hold mode forever, literally, as long as they don't touch it.
Thank you.
Right, so if they, I think the issue was, the reason they didn't go down to dig underground parking garage to make it lower, then they would have to dig in there, and then that could cause, they'd have to clean it up. But as long as it is the way it is, they don't have to touch it.
Correct.
Does that answer all your, anything any more technical I can't answer. Councilmember Peterson.
I guess to the city administration, my bigger concern is if they do put that there and do underground parking, you're in the flood zone there for the thousand-year flood zone.
But they're allowed to do, you can do that with certain remediation, so it would be a feat of engineering, what can be done.
Well, I understand that. I just think that is something we would do to think about.
To dig, they'd have to clean up the toxics.
Correct.
Anything else?
Not for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Scott.
Brian, doesn't look like there's anything.
Nope, no public comment.
All right, thank you, Brian. Next, we have approval of the minutes, as consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of October 24, 2022, and November 14, 2022.
Slow move.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you. So, on the number of 14 minutes, we talked, DTE had come to that meeting, so I thought we had some follow-up items from DTE. I don't know that I've seen anything, so is someone still working on that?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, we are. They said they'd try to get to us within 45 days.
Okay.
And of course, the power was out at Village Green.
Main Street.
Main Street, OPC Cedar Brook, but, you know, whose county?
And rates are going up.
But they're, they're trying, or so they said, right? Next is, there's...
Roll call.
Oh, sorry, roll call.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
There is no consent agenda tonight, there's no old business table items, there are no public hearing. Legislative deliberation is a consideration of December wage adjustments for three non-union Human Resource Director Joel Allen, welcome.
Good evening, mayor, mayor pro tem, council members. I was hopeful, this is my new layout for the memorandums, and trying to give introduction background to give you as much information as possible so that if it would, you could make a decision based on the information. So, with this proposal, it's what you requested, that we come back in a few months since the original wage and compensation study was done, that there were four individuals at the time, now there's only three that are really eligible for this, and it would be the balance in the salary adjustment. It would be the approval for the 15%. So, they were originally given the 85%, which was under that threshold of the original increase of their wages, and this is just the balance. So, I'm willing to take any questions you might have. Tried to spell out that it is within the budget, everything has been budgeted for this back for the entire year. And Marcy's here as well, if there's any questions. She's my backup person for finance, and I just wondered if you had any questions at all.
Thank you, Councilmember Albrecht.
Being on the compensation, ad hoc compensation committee, and we did the two bites of the apple for four positions, one of them being your own, which has been omitted because of your promotion to HR director. So, this is in line with what we had approved as not only the compensation committee but the city council, so I'd like to make a motion to recommend that we approve the 15% balance for the salary adjustments for the three city positions, a fire chief, finance director, and city clerk, as outlined in the memorandum and the table that was provided.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Peterson. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a consideration request to add BSNA online module and approve invoice cloud contract. Marcy, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll close this out. Might make this a little, might make this a little easier. So, before you tonight is a request, two-part request. More and more frequently, our building departments receiving requests to have permits handled online with your BSNA. BSNA can accomplish this, but there's only two payment providers that are supported by BSNA, one of which is Invoice Cloud, the other is Point and Pay. We did, Finance Director Maggio and myself, we did a full deep dive into the two options, and we felt that Invoice Cloud offered a competitive rate as well as superior options for our community, for communication purposes, as well as payment options. So, we are, it has a budget impact for the, for the request. For the BSNA online, there's a $7,475 cost. It costs $3,000 per year after it gets established, but it will cost additional money to get implemented and for staff to get trained. So, that's a request of 74, 75. So, recently, if you'll recall, we presented the master fee schedule, which we had indicated our estimate of increased revenue was going to be approximately $10,000. So, we feel that this ask is still within reason, and it still has revenue to support it. So, it's two-part request today. It's the approval to move forward with BSNA online to support building, but not just building. Utility billing would be a part of that, and any credit card processing that comes across the counter or online would be using this new Invoice Cloud system. So, I can walk you through a little bit. I'm sure you had many pages of the, in the packet. There's a scorecard. No public safety points were given, but it, but it still receives 17 points.
She's holding herself accountable.
Because of the impact that we feel physically, as well as for the community as a whole. So, we've included that. We've included the BSNA contract, which city manager, if it is approved tonight, would sign, and we would begin implementation process as quickly as their schedule will permit. We're anticipating if we move forward with both of these, we'll be able to launch it by mid, by mid 2023. We're hoping to do it sooner than that, but conservatively, we're saying mid 2023. I wanted to show the Invoice Cloud because this is one of those things that we are really dedicating ourselves to getting up to the modern age as far as payment options. With Invoice Cloud, people can pay on their phone. People can pay via text message, they can pay email, they can pay the regular website way. We can communicate with them with customizable templates, and we can send reminders, which we've never done in the past, to kind of give folks an idea, your, your water bill is going to be due in the next couple of days, or your water bill was due two days ago. We can set that up to make it customizable so it fits with our community needs, but it will allow us a lot more opportunity to communicate and more opportunities for people to pay in a more modern fashion. So, I don't know if you might have some questions? I'll be glad to, I'll be glad to address them.
Councilmember Albrecht.
With, if, if we approve this, Nick signs this, you put mid 2023, how long will the training and ramp up take, Marcy?
They're, they're actually estimating that it takes three months, but with it being the holiday season, I'm tacking on an extra couple of months because I don't know if that's going to be impactful. I believe it might. I believe it might, so I'm saying mid 2023.
Like April, May, kind of?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Trent.
Yeah. Could you go back up to the previous slide? So, that was what they were saying, what you can save? Is that right, or what?
So, basically, this is, it's impactful. Invoice Cloud looks at this in a couple of different ways. This is an example from Arlington, Texas, their community, and this is actual data that they have compiled, and this is what Arlington saved by utilizing the Invoice Cloud program.
So, that was, no, yeah, let's save 900,000. Let's do that.
Not us, because...
We could save 900,000. Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah, that would be nice. It would be nice, but I think we'll need a few more people, we'll need a few more water customers, yeah.
But the savings is real.
Yeah, the savings is real.
Whoever's listening to know that.
And to your point, the savings isn't just real for us, it's real for our customers because the customers pay that convenience fee, that service fee. So, for the majority of our customers, it's $400 or less for their water bill. This is, will be less expensive for the customers at that, in that window of savings, and it's comparable to G2G, which is our current provider above that. So, we believe it's, it's a win-win for the public and for the city.
So, if they pay, though, with their check, I mean, a direct, oh, leave from their bank, that's...
It's free.
It's free, right. Yeah, so I wanted to point that out as well.
Cash is always free, checks are free, and ACH is where we are pulling directly from the customer's account. That's free.
And the Invoice Cloud supports that.
Correct.
Right.
Councilmember Gould.
Thanks, Marcy. I have a couple of questions. My first one, I hope, isn't, isn't too ignorant, but BSNA, we're already doing something with them?
Right.
The city's already contracted with them. For what?
That's our ERP, that's our full suite accounting. We have our accounts payable, our payroll, it's our, our, our main accounting mechanism for all the...
And that's why we're limited to only the other two solutions for online payment.
The reason that we're limited to the two solutions is BSNA is compatible with two, fully integrated. So, we'll save in staff time as well because right now, we're doing some manual downloads and uploads. A lot of hands touch the work, so this will allow us to, you know, streamline that a bit.
Is this, as a citizen, I could use this to pay my water bill, my parking tickets?
Yeah, the only thing...
Speeding tickets?
Yeah. You, I don't, yeah, I don't know that we do the speeding tickets, but if, if you got a ticket, you can pay. If you have a parking ticket, you can pay it with...
The reason I'm asking is, is this the same system that the police use? Right, so we're not being redundant?
The police will be using this system downstairs, too.
So, are they changing to this system?
They're currently on G2G for anyone that pays with a credit card downstairs, so it would be a shift from G2G, the county's operate, system, to Invoice Cloud.
Final question. It looks like we're, we're already kind of in bed with BSNA, but they're going to charge us a $3,000 initiation fee?
Yes, because it is, and that was negotiated as well. We, you know, it's, it's, it's a business. So, I think that everyone, everyone that signs up for this would have to pay that. It's, we looked at that and we said, are you sure that it's going to be $3,000 every single year after that? And they said, yes, it is going to be $3,000 every single year after that. But it's one that we negotiate as part of an ongoing contract with them. BSNA has a very strong part of Michigan's market, and they're expanding all over the U.S. So, it is a powerful tool, and it is of good value. When we compared other, we went from Munichode, I think, before we were here, and the, and the capabilities of BSNA are, in, in my opinion, they're, they're superior. So, I think it's well worth the, the amount of money that it costs, and so, that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you. And they're headquartered in Bath, Michigan, so that's...
Correct, they're in Michigan. I thought you might, I thought you might notice that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sage. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, given our integration with BSNA, is it really six months? And I guess I would ask, what is the history with BSNA and other municipalities that aren't integrated? Is it also six months or greater?
I'm not worried about BSNA. I think that's going to be a real quick turnaround.
Okay.
It's going to be Invoice Cloud.
Okay. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. So, I appreciate you bringing this, and I appreciate BSNA because it's not only municipalities that use it, but all of us use it out there in the real estate world, title companies, mortgage companies, everybody. It's a well-rounded county as well, so I appreciate it, and I just know it'll make everyone's life a lot easier, even at all those different levels, just knowing they have that capability in the future if they choose to use it, use it as well, so.
Councilmember Trent.
Yes, I just have a question about technical support. Is it, does that part of the 3,000, or is it 30 or 90 days, and then they charge you, I don't know, 200 hour, 200 an hour, just off the top of my head?
That's one of the, the strengths, I feel, of BSNA is they have, they have a strong technical team. We can communicate with them via email, we can communicate with them over the phone, they're even there after hours. So, we actually kind of start to know our, our people, and we're like, well, did you speak with Sawyer? You know, it's, you start to develop relationships with the, with the team at BSNA. So, I, I feel like it is good, it's included in the package, it wouldn't be extra, you won't, you won't pay for your technical questions. If you wanted to probably write a custom, some kind of customized report or some, something custom, you would pay for that, but we're not, that's not what we're asking for. We're asking just to really turn a lever and get us compatible so that we can integrate Invoice Cloud, and we can communicate this to, with our customers.
Oh, well, that's good. So, there's no ceiling, like, it's like, you know, 50 calls or 100 calls?
There's no ceiling.
Okay, all right.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Marcy and the team. This is a great initiative, and it, I think it's going to be great for our residents. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to add the BSNA online module and approve invoice cloud contract for payment platform integration.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Peterson. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Next is a consideration request to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Rochester and the Oakland County Board of Commissioners.
Mayor, do you want to do your appointment first, Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Looking right at it. Next is the confirmation of a mayoral appointment to the Retirement Board. That was David Bericich to the OPEB Retirement Board.
Slow move.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Now on to consideration request to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Rochester and Oakland County Board of Commissioners, naming Michael Lor Meyer as the designated assessor for Oakland County.
So before you tonight is exactly that. This will look quite familiar to you if you were sitting on council in 2020. At that point, we we named Dave Heber as the designated assessor. Due to some staffing changes, we are we are being requested to make the motion to name Michael Lor Meyer to be that designated assessor. This is all part of the Public Act 660, the property tax assessing reform, where we are required to have a designated assessor on record. For for your information, it's part of the AMAR audit report. And I'm proud to report that in July of 2022, the City of Rochester met all of the minimum requirements. And we passed with a perfect score of that review. So the next time we'll have that audit, it will be in another five-year cycle. But if we had not, then one of the corrective actions would have been for the designated assessor to guide us and help us meet the requirements as defined by the by Public Act 660. So it's really a housekeeping request today for for you all to update and approve the interlocal agreement, denoting that Michael Lor Meyer is the designated assessor. I feel confident that that we won't need to utilize his services. But if we, it is one of the requirements that the the state has for communities, that we go through these different steps and we're ready if if that ever did arise. So if you have any questions about this, I'd be glad to answer them.
Councilmember Peterson.
Oh, I just want to say, thank you. I enjoy knowing that Oakland County Assessing is doing all the assessments, unlike other surrounding communities that don't utilize them. I know the savings is huge for the municipality and the services they provide. Leave it to where it is a fair, fair across the board, instead of in some communities where they do them themselves. So I I like that we're out of that realm with that. So I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, Marcy.
Thank you.
Next, we have receipt of the check registers that are in your packet. And then we are on to receive report from the various boards of the commission. First is a report from the Paint Creek Trailway. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items to update, first being Bridge 317, our bridge there on the Paint Creek Trail. The commission has submitted a pre-proposal for the DNR Fisheries Grant, which is roughly $200,000. If we are invited, then we will submit our formal proposal in January of 2023. We've also or will apply for a Sparks Grant on the 19th of December, which is up, we're going to apply for up to the $1 million for that for that grant. The commission has also requested assistance from the city regarding TAP grants because obviously they cannot apply for those. And I think we're in communication with them and we're working through that process.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. The southeast Rochester property, that little piece of land that the Trailway Commission does own off the Clinton River Trail. The Trailway met with the attorney of the estate that wants to develop or have a memorial on a trailway in Michigan. And they've designated our trails as that site they'd like that. So the Trailway Commission went out with the attorney to the property and has reviewed a site plan, if you will, that we've proposed. We are now awaiting AEW, our city engineer, to give us a cost estimate to then present back to the estate and see if they are amenable to that, and we move forward.
Very good. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I worked with Melissa at the Trailways Commission. I read through the application for the fish and wildlife, and it goes back to when we did the creek. So that's an awesome application. So we got a bunch of people involved, TU and stuff. And you would think, what's a bridge got to do with fish passage? But that bridge happens to have pilings underneath it that were there for 100 years. And when there's pilings submerged below the water, debris gets caught up. Debris gets caught up, it starts moving the water where you don't want it to go. Fish can't pass. So by taking out the pilings as part of this grant, huge points. And then second, they're going to do a clear span bridge with no pilings. So now you have clear flow of water. Same with the bridge up at Tinkin'. So both those projects, I think Fisheries is going to be very excited to know they're good. I went into breakfast at Lake Orion Sunday night, crossed over right downtown Lake Orion. You can see where Paint Creek comes down. There's seven trees down in that river that are literally blocking the river passage. A stream, a trout stream needs to move water to stay cold. So they're working on their end, but this would be a huge thing. It was an exquisitely written proposal. I read through it word by word, and they listened to all of us, the TU people, Trout Unlimited and everybody. And I'll bet you they got a good shot at that grant. It's 250, but it's 250. That's a lot, so just want to throw that in there.
Anything further, Mr. Sage?
That's it, sir.
Okay, now we're going to have a late report that was submitted to us from RARAH. It's Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes, this was on the last city council meeting agenda, but we didn't have a quorum at that meeting. So we were able to finally meet on November 15th. So I just wanted to report out on that meeting, and then we'll go back to our regularly scheduled meeting in December. I've always reported on registrations, and these these numbers are through the end of October. So we still have two months to go. We're on a calendar year. But we already have 8,646 registrations through the end of October. Last year, 2021, for the total year, it was 7,830. So we are already, after 10 months, well ahead of where we were last year. The pandemic year, the number was 5304. We're below where we were in 2019. We still haven't caught up to 2019. And again, the impact of the dance program really has has a has a bigger impact on that number. But we're very pleased with the registrations and how people of all ages are using RARAH. The roof was completed, and we're waiting for some final bills to come in from the contractor. But they've done a great job. Couple side notes. We had our craft show, and we purposely schedule it the same weekend as the OPC. And really, it's not a competition. People go to both craft shows, and we really almost encourage people to do that. And we had 35 vendors at our craft show. I know OPC probably had many, many more because they have more space, but it was a very successful. We made money on that. And then one of the things we do at RARAH are birthday parties. And we we those obviously were greatly impacted during the pandemic and really post-pandemic for that year where people just didn't really want to gather. And now we almost can't keep up. It's one of our more profitable offerings are the birthday parties. So we've had 46 this year and generated almost $12,000 in revenue. And just a follow up from last meeting, somebody asked about who went into the the building we sold. It's a company, well, it's a franchise called Pickup USA Fitness. So they are going to be using the basketball courts. It's really for pickup basketball and basketball training. They have a training room in there. We did have, if you remembered, a roller rink in there, an ice rink, which we've we've just they dismantled and was able to go to a good home. So a good meeting. And finally, don't have the actual numbers, but we will exceed budget again this year. And we're guesstimating we'll put another six figures into the reserve fund as we did, which will then give us some opportunity in 2023 to do much needed capital improvements inside the facility. That's it, Mayor.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So for Councilmember Albrecht, so on the sale of the property, what was the net after payoff of the building?
I don't have I don't have that number.
Okay, I would like that, though, if administration can get that. I think that we should know what tax dollars that was brought in. Thank you.
Nick, I can I can get that for her. I just don't have it.
Yeah, that's fine.
I know, I'd like administration to please do that. Thank you.
Okay. Excuse me.
No, it's okay.
Onto public comment.
Yeah.
So is there a question?
No, I'm good. Oh, I didn't, please. I didn't say a word.
Yeah, I think we can trust probably Mr. Albrecht, too.
No, I guess not. I'll let administration do it.
No, protocol here is I'm supposed to ask administration. They can do it however they want to, but I asked administration to do so.
I'm the RARAH Vice Chairman. I offered to do that as a courtesy to our Senate council members and public officials. I just didn't have the number today. Your comment almost, I took the impression from your comment that you didn't trust that the number I was going to get was going to be accurate. That's why you threw it back to Nick. So I was upset by your reaction.
Okay, well, you shouldn't take things so personal because I have a duty here to ask, and that's what I did. I just wanted that. And by the way, it was asked at one of the prior meetings, too. And it was also said we don't have that. So I would like the number for the public.
Thank you. Onto public comment. Mr. City Manager.
On a brighter note, this is unrehearsed. If you just indulge me for one minute, could you two ladies come up here for a minute? I'm I'm big on, you know, you charged me with for this next year. And I watch it every day unfold with the staff, the camaraderie, the going one more. My son-in-law has made a brand called Go One More. And that just means a lot of things to a lot of people. It's a good creed for many, many people. So I'm going to start with Joellen. So there is no backup for HR now. As you know, the former was a HR person, so that was there for her. So things like, obviously, you do your job, and Joellen will get mad at me for doing this, but you do your job with payroll and all this stuff, but you're by yourself, basically, now. Holly's there to help. But we had a dormant wellness committee, and that's extremely important in our medical rates, in our what we can offer our employees. And we we have things like every week, there's something out there. It's the magic of beans in your diet. And then all the people in the front office are bringing in recipes for people to have during lunch or for beans for breakfast. I saw them even, yeah. So that then the wellness, so the wellness committee is like recharged again. And it's they you get points and people, she sets up seminars for people to come in. It's all free to the employees, and they're taking advantage of it now. And it's going to make us healthier, which is going to keep our rates down, there's no doubt. In my mind, I think we're already seeing that. And then the Safety Committee, same thing, kind of dormant, not taken seriously. They're back there with Cislik and Colin and everybody monthly, making sure that we're doing the right thing, where we get training at the DPW yard, with the police, with everybody. And again, not fighting it, embracing it. And that's because Joellen kept pushing, saying, this is all for us to be better for ourselves, for them personally and as as a city. So the shout out that what you're doing is is well thankful and noticed by everybody. It's just, I appreciate it with no backup. Second, how Marcy, Marcy is Marcy, but and she hates the stuff. But if you look at the lobby, that lobby was supposed to cost us $250,000. We didn't even spend $11,000. I don't know. When you walked in today, you see how bright it is. She found the contractor, she found the little guy to do the painting and fixing all that stuff. She found the flooring guy local to do, rip that out or not rip it out, save money by going over that twice, putting in a new floor, getting the railings redone, that had never been done. And then we we got with the staff and we talked about that showcase. That's kind of been a joke for all these years. And now we have a itinerary that every two months, a different border commission is going to take that over. So staff took this over. So today, Rose, who you guys met at the committee, comes in, and she was going to take stuff to Goodwill. She loves Christmas decorations and vintage stuff. So in a couple hours, we turned her loose down there, and look what she did to that little showcase. She even throwing the curtains, but we made sure she was safe when she did it, right now. So so all those little things, so people already come in and sit, you're all like, whoa, what happened here? For like no money. And it's the effort and because Marcy saw it, so I'm tired of this. Now, Anthony ordered a flat screen that's going to go on there that will have all of your information, all the past pictures of the councils in that document. And I think I told you a little bit last time that Pat McKay from the historic group at the museum is going to come in, we're going to have a kiosk that new people can come into town, sit there and look at it and learn why they're coming to Rochester and what we're all about. So shout out, that's not in Marcy's job. And then she just said, I'm tired of this, and we're going to do it. And it gets done in two weeks. So I'm, everybody's appreciative, and I know I'm going to need the resident resources. And and that's. Solidify that chain of command with Deputy Treasurer, Deputy Finance Director, Director of Human Resources. So it's all coming into place, and I couldn't be happier and more proud. So thank you, ladies, very much. That's all I have.
All right. Madam Clerk.
The State Board of Canvassor certified the November 2022 election today, so.
Thank you for that job well done for our elections.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould.
Yeah, I am sorry I had to miss the November 14th meeting. I was would like to request an excused absence for myself. And I understand my colleague, Councilmember Peterson, was absent as well.
Make a motion.
As well.
I don't, yeah, I know it's not, you don't have to, so, but whatever.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to have an excused absence for both Councilmember Gould and Peterson.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia, support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mayor Protem.
Yes, just wanted to make sure all of council knew that we are invited to walk in the Christmas Parade, December 4th. Can't wait. The weather looks pretty good. No rain seems to be in the forecast, no snow. So there will be two vehicles that will have signs on them, one for the mayor, one for council. So kind of a change, we bring our own vehicles. So I'll have the vehicle for council. I can have a driver in it, but if someone wants to ride in the vehicle, they're welcome. Or if maybe partway through, somebody wants to ride, they're welcome. And then we all meet at the Grand Traverse Pie Company between noon and 1:30 so we can gather. Roads are going to be closed, and then we can all walk together.
Mr. Mayor, if I, I just thought before, I forgot something I wanted to say, that in the lobby, when you walk in, you see the wreath and you see the tree. Thank you, Councilwoman Peterson. She, I think you, they kind of look familiar, like maybe festival tree stuff. And she donated that so that we could use that in the, and we thank, and they'll last forever. They're they're done really nicely, vintage wreath. And Marcy, we can find a place for this, so I'll thank you for that, by the way.
Very welcome.
I'm sorry about that.
The historical wreath, and that actually has all the ornaments of the historical buildings in Rochester.
Oh, cool.
Thank you.
All right. I would just like to add on to the Mayor Protem that they have the, at the Great Oaks Country Club, on Thursday night, they have a gala for the Christmas Parade and the Grand Marshall.
The buyers.
Yeah, through the chamber, Rochester Regional Chamber, get the tickets from them. Rochester Regional Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, I think you have to, if you're going to go to that, I think you have to call there and get your ticket.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sage, do you have anything?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Nothing.
Councilmember Trent.
I have something on, it's, you know, festive time in Rochester. So on Friday and Saturday, they have the Kris Kringle Market.
Yes.
And that is on Fourth Street between Main and Walnut. And it's Friday, the 2nd, from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. And also Saturday, December 3rd, from noon to 10:00. So it's really a fun time to be in downtown Rochester in the evening. But bundle up. And I will be at the Raya tent, beer tent. And I hear that I have a hard act to follow. They explained to me how to wonderful job, Mayor Protem, that when I was at the meeting, the board meeting for Raya,[1701.33] um, meeting, the board meeting for Raya, I was told you did an excellent job and that, um, in fact, I were trying to, wanted me to, hey, you know.
Come back?
Yes, you can come back. And then they were saying that it's sort of like, that's sort of, you set the bar, like, and I have to do it, too.
Come check on you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Um, yep, a couple things. So, uh, first, um, thank you all for the excuse absence. But I know we don't have a policy on that, so. Um, no, I wanted to, uh, mention that the National Association of Realtors, uh, got together with the National Forest Foundation. And we gave them, and I say we, cause that's what I do, um, part of that, uh, for the 1.575 million Realtors members that we have, we gave 1.5, what, 100, I'm sorry, $1,575,000 to the National Forest Foundation to plant, um, that many trees within the next two years throughout the United States. So to help recover from, you know, the devastation that has taken place throughout, from fires, floods, everything. So, uh, that's really good. And then next, I want to, uh, thank, uh, Chief Cislik and, um, John Shep, uh, for putting together the Citizen Fire Academy, because I attended that and finished, uh, both academies. And I have to tell you that John and his team, Christine Coe and her team, all of them are amazing here in our community. And I don't know how we could ever do without them and what they've provided. Um, and also for the CERT team and those who, um, participate on that. And it is interesting, we have people coming all the way from Dearborn to participate in our community from the CERT team. So when you're out there, it's not just our own community members. They're from all over. Uh, wonderful people. And, um, it just was a very wonderful experience. And, uh, very, uh, proud to have, uh, been a part of that with them. Um, so it was very, kudos to all of them for what they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I would just like to add one is, this is the last week of leaf pickup.
Yep.
So they started today. So if you have any last thing, this is gonna be the last week, I think. Done pretty well.
It's the last cycle of leaf.
It started today.
They're still gonna pick up, um, GFL will still pick up bagged leaves the first and second week of December.
Well, they could take them to, and after that, you could take them to the ER if you want. And, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just reminded myself here that Helen Street, um, the last phase was they had to cut the manholes out with the concrete collars. They thought they'd be cut, the next day they poured. Little thing called can't get concrete dust. And I think the Pony was a little bit embarrassed that they cut and it's three weeks. So Wednesday, they're pouring all the collars and one day, it'll take seven days to cure. And then all the cones go away and we're done. So I appreciate everybody's patience. We had to backfill a couple this weekend, cause it's pretty scary out there on, uh, Third and Rose Lane and Third and, um, and Helen. So, but they're just about done and overall, great project. But we would rather not have them open that long. But we worked with both schools. We got everybody in and out of school for tomorrow. So they're gonna literally close Helen's. They could pour them all in one day.
Good. Thank you. Then I'd just like to give a shout-out to the city for the job at Lonnyup. Um, I was actually at the first Lonnyup where they weren't expecting a crowd and it was chaotic, where now it is roped off and there's CERT teams and there's police and there's fire. So they do a great job. And of course, Lonnyup has now become a Metro Detroit event that people come from all over. So it's a really fantastic thing. And I guess I would like to add that when I was on the stage, I did ask Santa, boy, Michigan football victory.
You did.
So I now believe in Santa again. So, meeting, uh, Mr. Sage?
One quick question. Uh, I wanna thank, uh, Councilmember Peterson for the update on the, uh, National Association of Realtors. How do we apply for some of those trees?
Give money.
Oh, is that what it, okay.
Well, no, I mean, you, you need to reach out to them. I know you probably already have at some point.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
And, and a lot of that was for the fire burns out west that they're really trying to focus. Cause you, this is tens and twenties, this is thousands and tens of thousands of trees planted at one time that they raised that much money for.
Well, we, yeah, we gave that and it's supposed to go for the whole U.S. So it's not just one area focus, but it was really awesome. So go big.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think so. So there's.